The time.
The talk that I heard was that they just wanted all department heads to be exempt. And so she came in yesterday and said, you know, that that's what she had been told. And so that's what I put into here. If you guys don't want to do that, that is totally up to you.
I can chime in a little bit. Yeah, I think the conversation maybe was that we tried to make all department heads non-exempt or exempt. And how we get to that point, Shawna's department and several others, you know, Road Department, Mike's department, there are a number of them that, you know, that do overtime frequently throughout the year. And the conversation or the mindset was try to get that on a fixed number. Probably use the flex time more than overtime. And in a lot of ones, the department head is a single department or a single employee department. And overtime by our policy is supposed to be approved. And so how do you, you know, how do you do that? And it just makes, for me, it makes it cleaner.
So on the exempt time, Commissioner Messer, or maybe Joetta could answer. So if she has an emergency and she has her 40 hours in, but has an emergency and can't flex that week and ends up getting 50 to 60 hours in a week, can she flex the next week?
Well, I mean, typically with exempt, you are paid to do a job. You're not paid to keep hours. So, I mean, in reality, it would be nice if she could flex during the same week. But we could also look at it like as a pay period too, you know? I think as long as her department is covered, that would be fine to flex hours during the week.
But so if it happens at the end of the pay period, she's still?
I mean, it's, she's exempt though, so it doesn't really matter, you know? I mean, you're paid to do a job, not keep hours, you know?
Everybody's paid to do a job.
Exactly. But what I'm saying is you, you work until the job is done. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and there is no, like, you know, Neil was saying, you don't have to get approval to work overtime because you just know that that's your job to do. Mm-hmm, yeah. It's very difficult when you are 24/7 to keep track of those hours. I mean, I don't know how she does it now, but it's very difficult. I mean, here and there, you'll take a phone call, you know, that sort of a thing, so.
I wish we had a state's attorney, or is she on the phone? Is anybody? I mean, if somebody goes to 60 hours, is there anything legally?
Well, I think that's a question for Joetta, and I don't, again, it's no different than any other department, how we're handling that, right? I mean.
Yeah.
You're exempt, then you're exempt from overtime.
Okay.
That's what that means.
Okay.
So Shawna did come visit with me yesterday and give you options as far as where, if, you know, if she goes completely exempt, you know, obviously she was one that had overtime and such, what she would be looking at salary-wise going completely exempt. Those are on the disaster emergency services. You'll see under proposed, those number difference, where she would be at going exempt.
So just so I don't have to look through a bunch of papers. So the number that's on the sheet in front of us is, what's the adjustment between this and what was there a month ago? I could find it, but I know you know.
No, it's okay. Shawna Davenport, Director of Emergency Services, I know. All I did was I deducted 2,000 in our overtime budget and put it on my salary for emergency services, and then I deducted 1,000 in overtime on 911 and put it on my 911.
Got it.
So it's three. Do you have any other questions for me?
We did have to leave some overtime in there for.
Yeah, for Nikita, basically, yeah.
Yeah.
How forward is that?
I'm comfortable. I think, I, I think it's a reasonable number. I looked at what I've gotten so far in the year, and it was just, it was right in between two and three. And we had that one major winter storm. So I know every year it's going to be different, but I'm comfortable for now. And it will be a lot easier for me because they're right. I take calls all the time, and I'm like, 30 minutes here, an hour here, and it just gets really annoying, so. Yeah.
Well, and we have to take in consideration that she does have another, I mean, she has IT also. She has, I mean, she runs the department emergency services. She runs emergency 911, and now she also runs IT. I mean, so she took on, and, I mean, and her department did almost all of the map, well, did all the mapping. So I think we're going to have to take that in consideration of her salary.
So we're looking at Shawna, you said in between the, because we have to add the two because you're 20%, 80%.
It's just a total of 3,000, yeah, is what I went up for.
So you'd be at a salary for 2023 of 82, correct?
With the, if you guys do the 5% raise as well.
What does the board?
Is that reflected on the sheets we just got?
Yeah, it doesn't add up.
It doesn't add up. I have, I have.
You have 65, under proposed, department head 5%.
Oh, I was in the wrong column for it.
Well, unfortunately.
Didn't switch those other two, yeah.
Well, what it is, is I went, when I did the total sheet to get the dollar amounts, I used 5% or the department head one, which was mostly 5% plus ARPA. And it's not highlighted, like it was supposed to be in that box, but I used that 242,03, 242,030 dollars and 20 cents number in the totals. So you guys know. And so that would be, now that other proposed 5% is if she stayed hourly.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Does the commission have any input on the IT? Because that was a very, that's a, that's a huge. And that's just like a whole, another job she took on.
She's constantly monitoring everything there, too.
Does the budget on it?
No, there isn't anything.
Well, on the IT, I guess I'll just start with a number. On the IT, I think that she should at least get $3,000 for doing IT.
I would agree with that.
Excuse me?
I would agree with that.
That's for the year? A lot.
So that would put her at an overall salary of 85,000 then?
Well, we could go four. I mean, you know, whatever you want, but I mean, well, we know how much work the IT was. It was hours, it's hours and hours of work.
It was, I mean, it still is constantly monitoring it.
And Consolidated kind of works with her. I mean, she's the go-to.
She's the contact, yeah.
Yep. Well, what is your amount that you would think, Bernie?
I didn't think about it until just now, but 3,000 to me seems, I mean, I guess I didn't think about it until just now, but 3,000 to me for a year's worth of work doesn't seem like a lot. And granted, everything is running pretty smooth now. I mean, the communication between Consolidated and yourself is, is good. And you guys understand, they understand you, you understand where they're coming from?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I mean, without Shawna taking it on, it would have, I mean, it would have been tough.
We'd probably still be in a mess.
Yeah.
Or we'd have to hire somebody to do it.
We would have had to hire, yeah, we would have had to hire another employee for IT.
What are your thoughts?
I'm comfortable with whatever. I honestly just, I mean, I didn't even have it in my head, so I'm comfortable with whatever you guys feel is appropriate.
I'm not on the IT, so I don't know what that involves. So I'm, I would defer to the ones who are kind of monitoring it.
That's not even 300 bucks a month.
That's true. What do you think, Bernie? You were on IT with me.
Like I said, it's running better now. Do we, we want to just, I guess?
I mean, you could try it there and see what it does 12 months from now. And kind of maybe mentally monitor your allocated times between the various departments.
So are you suggesting adding a salary line into IT for this? Or are you going to, are we going to keep it in the overall salary that we have split up?
I think you got to put it in IT.
It has to be.
Yes, be 92.
Because if you ever change it in the future.
I think you should do that.
Yeah.
Okay. And then are you going to be adding IT to your current job description, I would assume?
Probably need to, right?
It probably needs to be added.
Yeah, have to be like an IT coordinator or something like that, I don't know.
I guess.
Well, at $4,000, it's $408 a month.
I was going to think 350 a month, maybe.
You got to divide that again.
Yeah, because 4,800 would be.
Yeah, 4,800.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm multiplied. What did you say, Bernie, 35?
I was thinking maybe $350 a month. I mean, that's not much more, I guess, but.
Is that going to be a set amount like we have with, are you going to do that and raise it every year? Or are you going to do that as a separate line item, like Jessica has her contracts?
I think, I think like Neil said, let's set it for a year and see where it goes, and then we can decide if we want to add that into the regular yearly increases with raises and stuff.
Okay, so you want to do a separate line? Okay.
Just for my information, do we have any other departments that this could overlap into where we're, you know, taking the department head and kind of divvying up responsibilities? Anybody?
We tried that and nobody, when we had all the IT issues.
Yeah, I'm not talking about IT. I'm saying does the L, is the Road Department, does he oversee some other department where we might have to have, we have to look at this from, from a broad perspective, so.
I mean, we help wherever we need help.
Yeah, no, and I shouldn't have picked on you.
But, you know, I don't, no.
I'm just looking at from an overall, so if we pass this, which I'm fine with, but after the meeting, does someone come up and say, hey, I do this, and I'm a department head, and I want a separate line item for that? So I just, you know, just.
The only thing that I could think of maybe in the future, and with the way the Weed Department works, sometime maybe that might fall into the Road Department.
But we have a department head for Weed though.
I know that.
But that doesn't work, I mean, we talked about that a few years back, about Al overseeing or somebody, because he sees everything and he's on the road, the graders are on the road, they know where the weeds are.
Yep.
They could have great communication with each other. Other counties do that.
Well, you can have, again, that's off-topic here.
Yeah, but.
It is off-topic when you sort of brought it up.
But you asked other, you know, you asked what other, well, at $4,200 would be 350 a month. No, wait, did I?
I mean, the only one I can think of is the discussion you had with Natalie about the GIS mapping and tax director. The issue with adding, you know, salary to every new job that somebody takes on is then they are not, you know, you can't, it's very difficult to say, well, our IT director makes $3,000, because it's not really the IT director, you know? She's being paid more as an emergency services manager. So you, you know, you're going to be saying basically our emergency services manager is going to make whatever you decide to add on, you know, to her salary, so.
But any other department head at that time could have stepped up to help us out because we asked and nobody was, I mean, I think we need to give credit where credit is due, because nobody else stepped up in any departments to help out. And it was hours and hours and hours of work.
Especially that first three months.
I mean, and I think when somebody comes forward, even like with the mapping, I mean, she just got, she was asked once, step forward, and I just think we need to give credit where credit is due.
I think Joetta is actually just saying, like, if you want to give her a salary increase because she took on IT and everything, give her an overall salary increase and put the IT responsibility under that department, but don't make it by individual job type situation. If you want to put her at a certain salary, is that where you're going, Joetta?
It is, yes, yeah. Because it gets very difficult when you start breaking out that this, you know, person makes this in this area. And then, because then if that job leaves her, like you're, you know, you're kind of discussing, then does she just lose all that salary then?
Yep.
You know, and you add it to another person.
Right.
That's why it should be under IT.
Right.
And stay under the IT line item, because if she does leave or does a one IT, then we don't have to take it out of.
If she leaves emergency services, and the next person in her position has no idea anything about IT, then at that point, they wouldn't be deserving of that money.
Right, but I, I'm just saying, I think she just needs to make, you know, her salary needs to reflect her main job of emergency services, I guess.
Well, and it does because of the amount she makes. I mean, it's, we're giving her minimal for IT, and her salary is, I mean, her salary is reflecting on, because it's separated from, you know, disaster emergency services and 911.
Maybe it would be better like how we do veteran services then, you know?
And that's kind of what I was saying is, we can do it that way if that's what the commission wants to do, just, and the reason why it's divided the way it is between disaster emergency services and E911, just so everybody's aware, is that we levy through the general fund for disaster emergency services. E911 is not levied for, through the general fund. And that was the way, because E911 was not funding itself enough, so we had to up the allocation of salary over to disaster emergency services. It's not about, honestly, it's not about the amount of time she does on one or the other, it's just to make the budgets work.
Right.
Yeah.
And she applies for that, what is that, the EMPG grant? So you get paid from the state for some of your wage also?
Yes.
Well, we can just, I mean, we can either go 350 a month, or we can just go 3,500.
I guess I'd go, I'll make a motion, I would go $350 a month. There's a line item on, under IT as far as director services, I don't know what you'd call it, it's not a salary.
Yeah, it would be like, I mean, we can call it something else. I don't have an issue with that. I prefer that you guys do, instead of doing per month, do a set amount.
Okay.
So that way it's divided up between the pay periods, better for us, and we can input it that way instead of per month, because we don't get paid per month. 3,500?
Yep.
3,500 a month, then.
Yes. So 3,500 for the budget year, okay? If you guys want to make, you guys can make that.
Bernie has a motion. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call, any discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
I didn't want to, how does this affect retirement then, if you have, like, is it still like salary then, or does she still pay retirement to that then, or?
Yeah, it would still be included. She would still get retirement and such on it. It's the same thing when you have that extra contract line.
Separating it is a, is a different line item into the different budget. I was wondering all that effect.
Yep, so she would still get retirement. It'd be the, it would be the same thing like you guys did Jessica's last year. You know, she still receives retirement on the separate contracts. It's just not reflected the same way in the yearly raise. So that was dependent on contracts. This would be a set amount, and then if the following year, you guys want to do 4,000, or if you want to leave it at 3,500, it's just not reflected in that percentage or hourly part.
I vote aye.
Okay, chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
And then, do you want to amend that motion from August 4th to include Shawna in the exempt and put her at this dollar amount that is proposed? Or what would you guys like to do?
I would move that the 911 and emergency coordinator position be exempt, be an exempt position. I think we need two motions.
So you're going to amend the motion from August 4th?
No, I'm going to make a different motion.
Oh.
Basically, because the, the original motion was all departments less emergency management and 911.
It was amended. It was an amended motion.
I understand that. That motion was passed as amended.
Okay.
So now we make a new motion, which basically supersedes that amended motion.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Messer made a motion to include emergency management 911 as exempt. I need a second, please.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, the other thing that I had on my list was, do we want to include in the general fund, a budget transfer from general fund to victim witness? Because we aren't 100% sure, I mean, the grant's there now, but it comes at a different time of the year, and I know that we have to fund that position. Are we going to go ahead and let me start budgeting to fund that position, and then the grant comes in, it will take off that? Or how would the commission like to handle that? Because currently, victim witness is, you know, not even a general fund number. Do we just want to do a transfer out yearly? I know.
It just went over my head what I was going to ask you. Oh, the grant amount, what is the grant amount?
It, it varies. I know this past year, I think it was at about 100,000 as of right now. I'll have to ask her what the new grant amount is. I just, it's, so the current, what I had for 2022 budget was a grant amount of about 110. I think the grant that she actually got did not, amount did not cover her entirety of her salary, but she is retiring, and we have a new person coming in. And so there's just going to be some accommodations there. So currently, their fund is a 6018 number, which is not a general fund number. I guess what I'm just saying as far with the commission goes is, should we have a line in our general fund for transfer out to cover the victim witness budget? And then when the grant comes in, you know, it might not have to be that full amount, is basically what I'm saying, so.
So you're asking for a 2023 authorization to cover the difference between any grants received and the expenditures for that department? Is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
So let's, can I back up 12 months? And say, okay, so in for the calendar year 2022, then, which we are currently in, if we allocate or approve general fund money to go towards that department, and then at the end of the year, the grant comes in, we have to make it a fund adjustment to come back out to zero that account out, correct?
Um, not to zero that account out, it would basically be more of an, and this could be more of an end of the year thing. I just, I want to build a budget that it's probably going to have to be a transfer out. And I want to go ahead and budget into our line items, you know, what if we don't get that grant? Because like we said, that's not a for-sure thing.
Right.
So whether it's just a transfer out.
So my question, I'll make the question real simple.
Sorry.
Did we do this a year ago?
Yes, we had to transfer funds at the end of the year to cover the deficit budget.
Okay.
Because there wasn't a grant filled out last year.
Right, right. So if we do this now, and then at the end of next year, we would have to make another adjustment. My, my thought is, is that.
Just do it yearly.
Yeah, and that's fine. I mean, I'm all supportive of what you're saying, because we can't run that in the hole. I'm just wondering if you leave money in that account like we do of some other departments, if we, you know, if you can just roll that forward, or is your wish is to kind of balance that every year individually, so.
I think my thought process on it is just to make sure that it is budgeted for whether or not they get that grant, but if we just want to do it as an amendment at the end of year, that's, that's completely fine with me. I just am a little bit concerned with us just depending strictly on a grant for this, because it has been, all my other funds that are not individualized or anything like that, like for example, weed, you know, we have to transfer in from the general if they're short. But they don't, their money doesn't go back into the general. And with the tracking purposes, I know with that grant with victim witness, they have to have a separate tracker budget to be turned in with the grant. And so we can't just add it to the general and zero it out every year. So I, I don't even know if I need a motion. I think it's more just to make the commission aware that we are going to have to do a yearly transfer to cover that position. And maybe, maybe you want to make a motion just to say that, you know, Stark County will be funding victim witness, whether or not that grant comes in.
Well, it's a required service that we have to do, so we have to fund it one way or not. The, it's unfortunate we missed a year in the cycle for that grant application. I think we're all supportive of what you're asking for. I don't know if you want to motion for, for, or just make the adjustment. My question, kind of where I was, I never got to there, was, do we need to do this so that you know what your general fund allocation levy will be?
We, I'm just wondering if the commission wants that included in a transfer out. We, I'm just wondering if the commission wants that included in a transfer out. Because right now, I have, I put in there as a two million for a transfer out just to kind of cover some of the stuff that I know is coming up. And that can just kind of be included in that dollar amount, but I would like some more documentation, which we can talk about. But if the, if the commission is okay, I would like to include victim witnesses' budget in, just in case they don't get the grant, in just our overall.
We have to pay for it.
Budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need to make a motion on that.
No, you don't. It's just your, kind of your opinion, if you're fine with that. The other thing I had was, okay, we talked about Shawna. The other one department head that we kind of needed to discuss when we were going through salaries, people going salary would be Mike. Does the commission right now, as I have his sheet, he has, I just put a five percent increase in there. Does the commission want to discuss with Mike? Neil, I don't know if you've discussed with Mike. Because he's one of the only other ones that gets overtime. That actually, one of them that uses overtime. Do you want to increase that salary for Mike, or do you want to stick with the five percent where we're at, or save that for the final budget meeting?
Let's go back to victim witness first before we jump to Mike, can we?
Okay.
So is for surely that grant filled out and was due the deadline date it was in? I mean, a hundred percent sure that grant was done this year?
Yeah. I mean, we provided the information we needed to, but they don't even know if they've been approved until.
October.
Yeah.
Okay.
So alls we can do is make sure it's submitted, but.
Chairman, if I may, a lot of those grants, like our cops grant, if you do budget for it, it's supplanting, and you can't get the grant, so. Just be aware of that as well.
That it's what?
It's called supplanting. If you already budget for it, then that means the money is already there, and they will not give you the grant dollars, so.
So we don't want it separated out, is basically what you're, you're getting at, because then we might not get the grant.
So you're just saying budget for it?
Budget the expense, don't budget the revenue.
Great.
Yes, okay.
Do we need a motion on that?
No.
No, because that's how we're running it right now.
Okay.
Okay. And then, I went through and.
Well, let's, let's deal with Mike.
Oh, Mike. I'm so sorry, Mike.
Okay, so I'll address, since it's my portfolio, I do think Mike's position is underfunded based on services he provides. It's verified and documented through one of the surveys that was provided to us for information, what that adjustment should be. It's open for discussion. But in that one, I do think at least for, to get that position up to competitiveness, competitiveness, easy for me to say. I think the adjustment needs to be more than five percent. Just my opinion.
I definitely agree with that. He's taken a lot of other duties too with the election and everything else, and now he's sitting there and monitoring our meetings and filming and videoing them for live streaming.
Do you have a number in mind that you were?
I was going to open it for discussion.
And Mike is, I mean, Mike is another employee that's, I mean, whatever he's asked to do, even if it has nothing to do with maintenance, he just, you call him and say, this needs to be done, or can you do this, and it's done.
Yeah.
So has our road department head also.
Yep.
I was thinking it should be about seventy-five thousand.
So just so the commission knows, currently with a five percent increase, that position would be at sixty-eight to fifty. Just so that you guys kind of know where we're at. And he will be salaried, so he won't be able to get overtime anymore. So we are.
Overtime, what did you roughly come out to?
Well, overtime line, we still have to leave someone there, just in case he needs his other custodian to
Yes.
do stuff. But his varies. It depends if it snows a lot. He's pretty good about flexing.
A lot of time, Mike, you don't even take overtime. No.
No.
Commissioner Franchek, you said seventy-five?
Seventy-five thousand, yes.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
I totally believe that. He's probably worth it. I don't know how their department heads are going to look at that at that point.
We had looked, talked about it.
He'd still be on the lower end of all the department heads.
We talked about increasing it last year, and it never happened, so I think it's definitely due.
We did increase it last year.
Yeah.
But we're trying to get him more in the market scale this coming year.
I'm looking for your survey, and I can't find it, but I would be fine with that. That was probably on the upper end of the range where I was thinking, but it's within the range, so.
What were you thinking?
Well, I was in that seventy-two, seventy-three range, so. But he is going exempt, so that helps.
And I will say that Mike is a huge help with elections.
Absolutely.
And so unfortunately, he can never give that up. He is locked in place with elections, whether or not he looks thrilled over there. But I do, a huge help with elections.
He never says no.
Oh, he did. Oh, I thought he did make a motion.
I guess if there's another discussion, I'll make that as a motion to increase his salary to seventy-five thousand for two thousand twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Okay, so the other thing that I just wanted to go over is when totaling everything, you know, I have to estimate kind of revenue. And obviously, we never know where some of the revenue is, oil and gas-wise. So I put in my, you know, my best estimates is as far as that goes. Currently, I still think that the commission needs to do, you know, sit down with me and do some sort of maybe a five-year plan or projects that we see for coming in five years. Because if we currently go by where we are sitting at, et cetera, we are going to be having another finding in our audit. I don't know where the commission is at with that. And you can see that, that that is what is reflected on the sheet that says, that top sheet that you guys have, kind of where we're, where we're going. It would have been your very top one.
If I could interrupt you, Karen, real quick. I think there are some other departments we need to address. Or do you want to do this page one of the Schedule B first, or what?
We can go on to the other departments. I just want you guys to keep this in the back of your mind.
Yeah, I mean, did you have other departments on your list of things to discuss today, or?
Um, yes. I didn't, I didn't know if we were going to do.
I'll follow that, fine. I have my questions, so I'm fine with however you want to proceed, so.
Okay, so some of the other departments that we had with some changes is were we going to combine tax the lines, the GIS and the other line into one line? And make that a set salary position, or are you looking to keep that, that line separately? Where, kind of where we're going at with that?
We discussed it last month on that particular one, that GIS mapping is part of the job description for the tax department. That's one of the ones I have written down.
When I talked to you, Commissioner Messer, you just, you had made a comment that you just wanted GSI mapping out.
Well, no, it's part of, it's something that has to be done, so somebody has to do it, and the natural position to do that is the tax director. So what I don't want is a separate line there, because there's not a separate budget for it. It's not a separate department. It's part of the job description. As we currently have, as we currently have it. We could farm it out.
I mean, isn't it farming out now to Shawna's department?
No, totally, a different service.
Okay.
So do you know, Neil, because I know that Natalie is one of your portfolios, if we were to delete that second line and do a set salary for twenty-twenty-three, do you know what number you guys discussed, or where the commission is at?
Well, Natalie and I haven't discussed that. What my point was to eliminate the one-one-two and put it up in one-one-one. And make that one line with the description, so that there's no vagueness on that, because if that position ever changes, then the interpretation of that change, just like with Shawna's deal with IT.
And like with Natalie using it and Jolynn using it, I mean, those are the two main people. We don't want to give some of that to Jolynn, because she uses it a lot too.
Different service.
Okay.
Different service. It's Mark GIS, yes, so, but what Natalie does and what Jolynn and Shawna's department do are two different services.
Well, I think it then probably should be left on the same line item then, because that is like a, that's a license. That's a GIS mapping license for her. And I mean, if that gets put up into the salary, then, like right here, it reflects on a raise on the GSI mapping.
That's, the GIS map, that line is not a license. That is for who was supervising the GIS service, the GIS portion of the tax department. It wasn't a license.
Okay.
Because we pay for the license separately. Yes. So that is strictly salary, that line for GIS.
And try to answer your question then, without having had a discussion that I, I thought we'd be adding lines one-one-one and one-one-two and just making them one-one-one.
Okay.
But again, that's.
And I'm fine with that, and I can make the combination if the rest of the commission is okay with that being just combined.
And that's fine. In the years before, did the GIS mapping line also get the raise?
Yes, it was part of the salary.
Okay.
No other discussion. I'll make a motion to move the GSI mapping into the salary of the department head or tax regulation director.
I'll second that. I apologize. I should have done that as mine.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
So the, I think the other one we had was, we had a couple more that went exempt. We had the Recorder's Office. Kim is going exempt status. Is there any changes that you think need to be made on her, or just move over to exempt? I did decrease her overtime line. She's, she has to leave a little bit in there. I will be decreasing her overtime line to a thou, you know, a thousand dollars. We're going to leave her just a thousand dollars in there. Because she's mainly the only one that uses the overtime line.
Kim, will that give you enough for your employees? If you want to step up, please.
Kim Cassian, Recorder. I believe so. The only reason I budgeted that overtime was mainly for me when I go out, or not travel. If I have to work over in the office, extra hours, whatever, and for election time. My employees really don't claim too much overtime. The only time in the past that they have claimed overtime is that if we had like a passport training out of town, and this would happen to happen on a Friday, you know, as you know, we get off at noon on Fridays, so they got like an extra four hours, and that was like the only time. Since COVID happened, we haven't really had any in-person passport trainings, so.
Okay.
I the thousand is perfectly fine, I would say.
Okay.
Just because of the fact that we don't, but just in case, for some reason, we would, I would need them to work overtime or anything like that, being I won't be able to, then I think that would suffice for it, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want any salary adjustments to Kim at all going to, was she on the scale where she was at, on the scale? Joetta, was she within? Okay, so she's already meeting the threshold. Okay? So I just wanted to check, inform the commission on that, and then.
I guess I would like to also go into the salary for the elected officials for the state's attorney. I know that. Yeah.
Yeah.
I know two years ago or three years ago that Ms. Ingles did took quite a raise, and that was because she was saying that she was going to work under herself and two other attorneys. And she said if that would change, then adjustments could be made. Well, I understand that it's busy and she needed one more. And both of those attorneys got a very big bump when they got hired compared to what was budgeted. And I just guess I find that, since they just got very good raises, I just find that I don't. And now that there is four employees up there, four attorneys, I guess I'm kind of just questioning their raises for the year.
I think it's a valid question. I think it's, this is more than a lot of our positions is a very competitive environment. The the second assistant and the third assistant positions, well, Amy was there previously. But the third position was tough to fill. And their caseload has increased because the courts are now back open, and all these COVID-delayed cases are back in there. Again, I think the survey that Joetta conducted would put these these numbers right in line in the middle of the statewide survey.
Carla, you're referring to the five percent increase on top of what they got, correct?
One oh five, yes.
Yeah, okay. And I did, in the total sheet, I did put in that state's attorney line, the seven seventeen, seven twenty, forty-nine, just so you know. Because I figured I didn't want to under-budget, but if the commission has changes, go ahead.
Yeah, because I was talking, you know, I was like the salary for the second assistant. Boy, this is loud. And the salary for the third assistant, I mean, they've got, they both got really good raises this year, or got very good salaries.
Start with them.
Stay with the market. The way the private sector, they can make a lot more money too. So we got a, you know, they'll get a way to keep retaining these attorneys too.
And I think their starting wages are pretty reflective on keeping them.
Well, like I said, I just know based on the experience of the application and the recruitment process of trying to get somebody here. I think that 110 number is very realistic.
I agree with that also.
I agree with the 110. I just think that I just I don't I don't know if I agree with the 110 plus another raise again.
110.
It would be the 2023 number. I think your questioning is that Pete was brought on at 105.
They were brought on higher. This is what was budgeted. But they were brought on higher. So 110 does reflect the 5%.
So then they were brought on at 105, these two?
No, just just Pete. Amy was budgeted for $95,000 basically for last year and then went to 105 because the position was equal to the to Pete's position. So you couldn't it would be tough to.
Yeah.
You needed to equalize those. And so now this the 110 number reflects a 5% raise.
110 number is proposed, okay.
Yep, the 110 number includes the 5%. So I think where some of the questioning is, is it was budgeted in 2022 for second assistant Amy for 94 to 95. But when they brought on a third assistant at 105 instead of 80, they had to bump her to 105. And so with the 5% raise for 2023, she'd be at 110 to 50.
So that's 2023 proposed DH and the other one is a 5%. What's the difference in those two then?
Proposed department head because of the changes made to the salaries. I had to, you know, if I went by the 2022 budget amount and just added 5%, that's what the difference is. But the proposed department head is 5% off of the new salaries that were updated. So what I what I levied in the total sheet was for the 717, 720, 49, which is at the bottom of that's what I levied for because I or have in the total sheet.
Any more comments? So the commission would like them to still be involved in the race.
I believe so.
I support it.
Okay. Okay, the other one that I was kind of unsure about was the whether or not we wanted anything in the capital improvements side for levying. I don't think we really need to. I think we could transfer some. I do have already budgeted a transfer of what's some of the oil and gas money coming in over there. But do you guys know of any thing else that needs to come out of that capital improvements? Because it already has a balance. If you look at the bottom of that sheet, that's the balance as of 630.
Well, you said Commissioner Messer, you had said some of the courthouse will be using that up, right?
Yeah, and I'm looking for the sheet. So I don't know how you handled that, Karen, the number that we visited about.
I haven't inputted it because it'll be a project and I don't have final numbers, but I will input it in here under the courthouse.
Yeah.
Yeah. And is that the only thing that you are okay with right now having under capital improvements that you can think of?
It's the only thing I'm aware of. Unless there's something else out there.
Okay, because we're not levying any tax dollars for capital improvement. So I think that that covers that. I did have the change in my auditor budget of moving my deputy auditor to 70 and taking out because we are going to be getting I can take it. I'm taking out the consulting and there was another line item for another position that's getting removed. And also tax mailings. We don't need a part time person to well, I'm decreasing that amount, excuse me. But the part time one that we had would come in during the winter time and help enter taxes. And we don't feel like we need somebody that we are going to be able to cover it with my current staff. So I'm also not budgeting for that. I'm looking at putting my deputy at 70,000. It would be more than the 5%. Does the commission have any questions on that?
So the question for me is, since we're reviewing all the departments that are proposing compensation different than the 5%. So I agree, Lana's taken up on additional duties. So I would agree that her compensation could exceed the 5%. I am also then your position at 92 versus a 5% number of 89 to 50, I guess should be visited about and get a blessing on. So as long as we're doing them, we should do them all, I guess.
Yep, I was just starting with Lana's, if that's okay.
Okay.
Does the is the commission kind of okay at that number? Or do you think I need to adjust it more?
I'm in agreement with it.
I kind of think it's a little bit of a big bump because we had given a big bump last year. Is just my opinion, and I know you do a lot of work. I would like to see it around the 90 range.
Okay, we're 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 doing the deputy auditor right now.
Deputy auditor right now.
Oh, she started talking about hers. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in agreement with the deputy auditor.
I am as well.
Okay.
Motion on that?
If you guys want to go ahead and set it at 70, that's fine. We have motions on the other ones that you're setting.
I'll move the deputy auditor position be compensated at 70,000 for the 2023 year.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Comis Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Okay, and then where mine is at, so a 5% bump would be at 89 to 50. I would like to be at the 92 mark, which is what the outgoing auditor was at. And it's not going to increase, you know, my overall budget. I have minimal increases. And I I think that 92 and I actually am quite considerably down on the pay scale for my position. If you look at the documentation that Joetta provided, I am in like the lowest, I think it was like 30, 25, 30 percentile. It was me, Mike, and one other person that were in the lower ones. And I would think that 92 would be appropriate.
My thoughts are is I think you're doing a good job, great job. I would like to see that position personally at the 5% bump. Exceeding that just, you know, kind of puts I think that's I agree, you might be on the lower end of 20 or the 30th percentile. But also I think we need to take into effect years of experience in that regard to comparing to the other one. So I know there's not a big difference. So I could leave either one. But if I had to make a decision, I would be in favor of the 89 to 50.
Any other comments?
You making that a motion anyway?
Yes, we need a motion, please.
I would move that the auditor position be compensated 89,000 to 50 for the calendar year 2023.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Messer.
Is do we want to have more discussion?
Or do we want more discussion? Sorry. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Okay, finally, we are on to the overall amount levied. If we stay at the levy that was done in the final budget last year. Okay, I mean, do you want to do those now or do them in the final? Because I'm just trying to get the general fund. I need to get the mill levies in for the general fund. That's kind of more what we're addressing right now.
We'll just finish up the department heads on those two. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Do you want to start with road or?
Sure. So I know this was talked about three, four years ago. I think the weed board does a good job. I just think that they need a little bit more oversight. I think that on off season, they could kind of be helping the road department more since it is a it's not a seasonal position. It's a yearly position for whoever's there yearly. And it just seems like the it just seems like the weed board is not running to the full potential it could be. And I'd really like to see it. I mean, it's like their budget wouldn't they would have trouble hitting their budget right now if the road department didn't pay their fuel. And I know L doesn't mind doing that.
Should you say that word?
But I would like to have L having some oversight. Or one of his supervisors having some oversight on the weed department. It was talked about before and it was agreed on before, but it never happened a few few years back. And that it really had nothing to do with L. And I don't know what the rest of the commission is thinks about that.
Travis Jefferson, Stark County Weed Control Officer. This is a weed board matter. Plain and simple. That would have to go before the weed board. That's not a matter for the commission to decide. So if that's something that you want to bring up to the weed board, that's fine. But the the commission's job is to do the budget, not to make the policy decision for the weed board.
I would agree with that. That should be something that should come from the weed board on if there's an issue or that some I just agree with what you're saying here.
And I said it earlier, we have a department head. If if the weed board decides that department head isn't doing his or her job, then then they have the ability to to rectify that. We're the budgetary control. We don't micromanage other departments that we don't have discretion over. And I just I think if there is issues with the weed department, we should get those messages to the board and let the board resolve them. And we and I've I've forwarded messages to you, Travis, to your board, to the department head. And so that's my position. I just I think the structure needs to remain the same as it is.
Okay.
My question in that regard, Ben, I don't know why, is that the weed board has proposed an 8% increase. Is that true?
Yeah, that's what they decided on.
All all across the board with everything or just compensation or what?
Yeah, compensation for employees.
Okay, but and I again, I apologize, I haven't gone through these lines. So your chemical line and stuff don't include the 8%. It's it's.
Correct. It was the 8% was 8% increase for employees is what the weed board voted on.
Okay, I guess I'd like to hear the rationale behind that.
Their justification for it, and I know Carla was absent from that meeting, was just keeping up with inflation, you know, the the weed board's job is to propose a budget to you guys so they have their budget meeting. And that's just the the number that they chose to go with.
Are you having a difficult time getting part time or full time help based on compensation?
Compensation, no, our our starting compensation is fine, you know, we're we're they a couple of years ago switched that to the starting of $22 an hour. So I I think the problem with getting help is more of a it's a certified position that requires, you know, extra training and testing and stuff and some other places pay pretty decent. So for it being a seasonal position, it's sometimes difficult to find people willing to do that type of position seasonally. But there's really no answer for that. You just keep plugging away and asking every every winter you start asking people if they know anybody. So.
I guess my gut feeling would be is keep it in line with these other positions in the county at the 5%, but I don't know what other thoughts are.
I agree. And I agree with you. I really never thought of that. We can go through the weed board first with the other part.
I will say on here, you'll see the proposed board 8% and on the proposed 5%, that's with the 5%. So you guys can see those numbers. Also, that general fund transfer in is really to cover the the reimbursement for the retirement health and FICA, which is what we kind of agreed on to last year. And so I changed that number to when I added all of these up on if you did 5% and how much it would be at to cover that, it came to about 47, 500. So I did change that line. So that's where some of the different that's really the only differences in the two is is the actual 5% increase versus the 8% and then that line of how much, you know, we were covering as far as those go.
Do we need to leave the overtime at 10,000?
With me going to salary, overtime could go down.
Okay.
Okay.
What's an amount you think could go down?
3,500 probably.
Down 35 or down to 35?
No, you could probably go down $3,500. So down to 6,500. No, you could probably go down thirty-five hundred dollars, so down to sixty-five hundred.
Because your, summer people use that too, right?
That's, yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Hey.
I'll move that we adopt the weed board budget with the five percent salary increase with the overtime line being reduced to sixty-five hundred.
You have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call vote, or is there any more discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Frantek?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Travis.
And then, the road superintendent, know that he'll be salary? Oh, he always was salary, sorry. I know he always goes above and beyond. He always has more than forty hours in a week. Or do we want to leave that at the five percent proposed? Or whatever percent we decide? Any comments?
I guess the department head made a kind of a budget present, or a proposal right when we met, so I, if he's okay with it, then I guess I'm okay with that.
I guess I'm okay. I only added a, a one little hike to a guy that I've kind of promoted him to be our safety guy, so. I think Karen's got it in the budget.
Okay. Can just move on until.
Okay, so I just wanted to give the commission the opportunity. Currently, we are, if we mill where we're at for the preliminary tax statements, and we mill for the same mill number that we did for last year's final, for the general. We would be at thirty-one point one-two for the general, and then for county milled on all statements, we'd be at sixty point three-six is where we would be at. At thirty-one point one-two, we'd be looking at tax revenue is six million, six hundred and four thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents. Does the commission want to, if I go by these sheets, is there any changes that the commission would like to make? Are you opening to lowering the mill? Where are you at?
I guess we don't have probably enough information to do that. I would be okay with sending out the, the required statements that you have to do at thirty-one mills for, with no change. The additional information I would like before we make, because we can always go down, right?
Mm-hmm, you can always go down, just can't go up.
Part of the question I would have is, I know we have a variance on the oil and gas distribution, and we, you know, we haven't, I don't, I haven't seen any of those numbers, so. I know last year, we left this meeting at a higher mill, and then we reduced it at the final budget meeting. I'd be okay with that again.
We're fine with that.
Once you can get us these numbers, plus we'll have another month of revenue in that before we make that decision, so. If you're okay with that.
Okay. So do you want to approve the preliminary budget as we have now, so that I can go ahead and get those put into the tax system?
So I think we have to prove the, how we're going to decide on the preliminary budget then, and how we're going to decide on the raises and everything?
Um, you can, you can wait until the September meeting if you want for the overall raise. That's up to you. If you guys want to, you know, stare longer at the sheets, or if you want to make a decision now, that's totally fine. Because I can get you more information even. If you want more information, or if you already know where you're going, that's fine too.
Um, I just have one question also. Why are we still playing, paying for screen? Building and permit fees of fourteen thousand in two thousand twenty-one, and then I see that estimated expenditures are twenty thousand dollars for?
Yeah, I've got that written down too. I, I just think that's just an oversight because.
I might have missed that one. I had to, I have to fill in the majority of the sheets myself, you know, as far as these budget and numbers.
Okay.
Those numbers are coming from me, so I might just need to take that one out.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't been compensated in eighteen months.
Natalie, they don't do any more work for us anymore, do they?
No, I, that was just an oversight on my part, so I can take that out. And then on the September fifteenth meeting is when I'm going to also have to you a list of some of the entities that are asking for funding. I went ahead and put it in here. In this budget, two hundred thousand transfer out for contributions, just because I'm not sure what the commission's going to go with, for the contributions line, excuse me. And then I also put in here a two million transfer out by the end of the year for some of the oil and gas revenue, just so we have that. Yeah, that's kind of where that is at.
I guess Commissioner Messer, if you want, since we're not approving everybody's raises today, maybe you want to amend that motion on the raise that we put for the weed board so we can do it all together in case it's different?
Well, my, my motion was the proposed budget that would go to the full board. So what I, what I was trying to accomplish by that is forwarding the five percent raise number rather than the eight percent number.
Okay.
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 Do you want to approve the preliminary budget or make a motion to approve preliminary for now? And I will mill at thirty-one point one-two mills for the general.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the preliminary budget?
You do?
Huh?
I made a motion.
No, she asked, she asked.
I said, may we have a motion?
You, Bernie?
I'll make the motion.
To approve the budget at thirty-one?
Whatever you just said.
Okay.
Thirty-one point one-two.
Thirty-one point one-two mills.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I would like a little discussion.
Okay, discussion?
Uh, my discussion would be, have we made any progress on thoughts on compensation? I know we talked about four options at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. I don't want this to become a last-minute conversation piece, so.
I guess I would like to see us give them a three percent raise with a fifteen percent increase on health insurance, which give it be at ninety percent. And those that do not take health insurance, maybe some of them would come on board, maybe some wouldn't, but at that rate, the difference from what they're getting now on at fifteen percent, those people would get half of that in the cash.
We, we can't do that, Bernie, and that's against the law. Actually, I can see Joanna shaking her head that, that, that is against the law.
Okay, well, then they are just out.
You, you can't, when somebody comes on board, you can't say if you don't take our health insurance here, you can't make the, yeah.
It would be only on the difference of the where we're at now to the ninety percent, but whatever. I mean, if you can't do it, you can't do it. And that's my opinion. I think the fifteen percent on the health insurance, we're not paying retirement, we're not paying all the other little fees that we have to pay on the salary increase. It brings us more in line with some of the other counties that are surrounding us on their hundred percent.
Yeah. The only comment I would make, well, two comments towards that, is we do have twenty-two or twenty-four individuals who don't participate in that, and so.
And I said maybe some of these would be a little more attractive.
And you may, and you may attract more into the pool if you do it that way. That, that's, that's understandable. I'm, it's still, for me, it's a number we don't control, so I'm a little skeptical of that. But the only additional comment I would make, based on some feedback that I've had, is if we go with a percentage plus, you know, like a cost of living, and we had two or three of those in front of us, is I would like to see us max out the compensation, you know, so I'll just use my number. I said five percent and fifteen hundred. I would like the five percent capped at per hour number, like one fifty an hour. So if the most you can get increased per hour would be one fifty, that brings our lower, I think the break-even point on that is about sixty-two thousand or sixty-five thousand, somewhere in there. If you're earning less than that, you get the full five percent. If you're more than that, you're going to get the, the dollar fifty. So that's the only additional comment I would make on what I had since our last meeting, so.
And that's not a bad idea. I just know that, I mean, I had a large amount of people call me since the last meeting, and they have a real problem with actually giving away money. I mean, cost of living, the whole county is struggling. A lot of people understood the increase in healthcare, but they did not like the fact of the money.
It's still money.
Well, yes.
And again, if we don't want to, you know, make that commitment today, that's fine, and have further discussions until the September fifteenth meeting, that's, that's fine. But we got, I think we have to keep this conversation going so that we don't, you know, come to this meeting next month, and then we're all, we're going in a bunch of different directions.
So Bernie, that was a motion, right, that for three percent and?
I guess it can be, I can make it a motion. Sure, I'll make a motion.
Okay, he made it a.
Didn't know if we were going to do that, we can continue with discussion before the September meeting or not.
But you don't have to make it a motion. I just didn't know if you wanted to today or not. I mean.
I think, I think we can, I mean, but we have to know by next month.
Yep.
So. I guess I, I just brought it up more so for the discussion part of it at this point. I mean, that's, that's where I'm going to lean, and that's probably where I'll make a motion at some point.
Okay. So that is just for discussion purposes right now?
I guess I still stand what I said last meeting. I still think we should be at the five percent and twenty-five hundred dollars from our ARPA funds, because that's where the money was given to us to retain employees.
That's a huge amount, Commissioner Frantek.
Yeah.
It is.
What about all of our Stark County residents that are struggling with the inflation? We're going to take twenty-five hundred dollars off their taxes? So they can?
It could be done, where we could reduce the mills.
I think part of the discussion on the pay, on the pay raise, I think the pay raise portion, the, the percentage, whether it's three percent or four or five percent, whatever, part of that discussion can be looking in the rearview mirror. We, the county gave zero percent at the twenty-twenty budget, gave two percent last year approximately. And so if they get four percent or five percent, whatever it is, that's collectively six or seven percent over three years. I would say the vast majority of employees in this county were equal or better than that in the last thirty-six months. The, the ARPA thing is another discussion. But it, it was part of the intent of that was to retain employees. And I go back to my original comment, which is, I don't want to make it a budget buster so that we have to keep on adding atop of that number forever, ever. Twelve months from now, we'll look at this, see what the inflation does, and see what the market is, and be able to go forward. But I'm, I want full discussion, so.
Okay. Any other comments? We'll make the final decision at our September meeting then?
I still need a preliminary budget approval for the thirty-one point.
Did we not do that?
Did we do that?
We did that.
You just have a motion.
I made the motion.
Yeah, you did vote on it.
Okay, sorry, Commissioner, for that motion, Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Do we have a second on that as well?
Yes.
You did. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Frantek.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to comment that there's next week, Thursday evening, there's a meeting with the FEMA, there's a meeting with the floodplain mapping on there for the open house, for anybody who wants to go to that, and it's at City Hall.
What time?
From five to six-thirty.
Another announcement, are moving, are traveling, go ahead.
And when is that, Jessica?
It starts tonight.
It starts tonight. Do you have enough volunteers to? Okay. Okay. Well, I can come up and help too if there's some needs. Okay. Anything else? Yes, Ms. Heiser.
Good morning, it's still morning. Lisa Heiser, County Parks Director. I was going to bring this up if I was called upon when you go through my stuff, but you did not. But I will ask you, that's okay. I will ask you, has anybody looked into the making somebody exempt the, the rules with that? Because this commission is doing things incorrectly in terms of making somebody exempt and the rules that apply to that. And also with the going from your hourly and the overtime, you cannot simply eliminate overtime from people's salaries. It's not legal to just go, we're going to save money, so we're going to put you all on salary. So just consider that and do some homework, because I hate to throw that wrench into you, but there's some things that you're not doing properly.
I kind of thought that.
And, and there is a piece of how many people get supervised and that, it just could cost you in the long run over the next two years if somebody said that they had overtime over the next, and that they could go back and get that overtime, just so you know.
Okay.
I just want you to let me know that I got your back, and I, I have, I have looked at all of our department head jobs and positions that they would qualify under. There's like five different exemptions that you can qualify under, and they qualify under one of those, so.
We'll just have to make sure legal takes a look at that, because someone had brought that up to me also. Anything else?
Our department head was, meeting was supposed to be at ten o'clock, so we'll meet in ten minutes here.
I move to adjourn, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?